All right, I think it's time to get this party going. We get the live stream going here. Okay, we should be live now. So welcome everyone to another town halls for enable. Let's get some notes up here and we'll get started. Okay, we'll start with some action items. Uh, let's see, John, any progress on the write up for the fiscal sponsorship agreement?
Oh, my goodness.
It's okay. I don't mean to pester you. It's just.
No, 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 I just like every week I need to do it.
I, I, I'm the same way.
I can report that we are. It's actually a reason why I haven't quite done it yet. So stand by, hang in there.
No. And I'm, I'm guessing we haven't had any luck reaching Brent Holler's right at him.
You are correct, sir.
I'm gonna go ahead and take that one off because I don't want to keep pestering you about it. He, he seems to be unavailable. So we'll just figure out some other path for the inventory if we want to pursue that. Uh, next one is for me to add the macro scope to the hub sidebar, which I did. So in the main forum on the hub now, you'll find it right down here with the little search icon. I, I labeled it as a super search, just to let people know a little bit more about what that is. So it comes right up in a little iframe. Might want to think about, uh, I know you got a lot on your plate, John, but if you could help to just write up a little basic. Uh, you know, I don't even want to say documentation, just a little bit of explanation of what you're seeing, what the size represents, things like that.
Sure.
We could, you know, add that on the top or the bottom, just to explain what people are seeing. Welcome. Is it Marty? Welcome? Glad you could join us. Okay, so let's see. Uh, so that one I'm going to cross off.
Uh, I think.
Go ahead, Marty.
The town hall meeting, it is on my computer.
I think so too.
Yeah. I'm trying to get the sound. How's your back?
Are you, are you not hearing us, Marty?
Can you mute him? I'll tell him.
Marty, are you there?
Yeah, yeah. Good.
Oh, now you hear us? Okay.
Good, good, good morning.
Good morning. Good to have you. Would you, it's, it's, it's good to have you with us. Um, I don't think I know you. Would you mind introducing yourself? Tell us a little bit about how you found your way here?
Yeah, I, 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 I was, I was try- trying to find the town hall. On, on, on the, on the YouTube.
Oh, okay. So that's a, that's a, there's a different link. If you'd like to just watch the live stream, we'd be happy to give you that link. I'll put it in the chat here. Just give me one moment. You're welcome to stay here with us, but if you'd like to just watch the live stream, that's perfectly okay too. And uh, if you know how to, I don't know if you know how to get to the Zoom chat, but I'm putting it in the Zoom chat for you right now. And so you can just click on that link and then you can drop out of this meeting if you choose to. It's entirely up to you.
So I, 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 I'm fine. I, 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 I just want to be a, a, a quiet mouse in, in, in the corner to see how I can be helpful at, at ninety years old.
Wonderful. And, and it's so nice to have you here. That's, uh, that's great. So yes, please hang out with us. These are just, you know, these are opportunities for us to just ki- kind of talk about a number of different activities we're doing to try to support the community. And you will find that there are lots of ways that you might be able to help out. So please ask questions as we go and um, we'd, we'd love to have your participation wherever you feel comfortable. So jump in anytime. Uh, so just going through action items here, the next one was for, uh, actually the next two are for me and these two I still have not gotten to. So I'm going to leave them on the list here. I'm going to do them when time permits. Um, I really wanted to get the badge done because I know that's um, uh, something that can help to encourage people to join in on making those other kinds of assistive tech that we now are inviting them to make. Um, so I had hoped to have that done by now, but I've been traveling, just got back two days ago. So hopefully I'll find some time soon here to get those done. And on we go. Uh, I assume, uh, no news from James Quilty so far, John?
Um, no, there was a, a social media post about their work within support of a group in Cambodia, but I don't think we've managed to get him to pin down a presentation.
Not a problem. We'll just leave that on there as a reminder for us when we have the opportunity to grab him and try to loop him in here. Uh, these are the metrics that we look at each week, just some of the key statistics that we keep track of in terms of our growing membership and the activity on the Enable Hub and uh, Enable Web Central and the help desk support that Rick manages so well for us. Um, I think our chapter number is off right now. Last I checked, we're somewhere around two hundred and twenty, but we still have an ongoing audit, so that number is bound to change and we'll update this once we get through that process. And as you can see, we still have a pretty healthy balance in the Enable Fund. Um, we usually don't start actively fundraising until we get down into the twenty twenty-five K neighborhood. So we're still in pretty good health here. Good opportunity for people to suggest projects that might benefit the community that might need some funding support. And uh, the money is there to support that based on community voting. So from the hub, uh, thanks to Sarah for picking out some posts for us to look at here. We have one from, I think it's Prado. Let's see what this is. Uh, it looks like that's the last name El- Elizir, Elizir Elvisdo Prado. I'm sure I'm pronouncing that terribly wrong. Um.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if someone had the, the language skills to properly.
Sure, we do. Deep L is an artificial intelligence language translator. So you can just pop it in here and select English and says, "Good morning, everybody. My name is Elizir. I'm from Santa Catarina, Brazil. I'm grateful to be part of the space with everyone. I'd like to help and ideas to help people. I have a 3D printer at home. Motivated to make a difference in people. Come on me. I hope to hear from you." So um, let's go ahead and just uh, send him a reply right now. I gotta look at how he spelled his name. L-I-E-Z-E-R. Twelve PM Eastern, right? For the new members meetup?
Yes, and that's today.
Yes, I know. It's a little short notice, but I'll send it right away so that we can at least try to get him in there.
And, and flag Everton.
Details. I just get that link. Uh, forum. New member. There it is. And we'll just send him here. And we'll translate that into Portuguese and paste that right back into his post.
Thank you for doing that. That's a great translating tool.
Yeah, it's pretty handy.
Within which someone will have a little, it probably already exists. There ought to be a Chrome extension that just builds that into every text box.
That's true. I do have the Google Translate plugin in Chrome. I couldn't use that.
Something that just puts it in the text box.
Yeah, yeah.
I have that now built into my email client, which I love that.
Yeah, that's really handy.
Um, the latest release of my email client came out with it built in. I didn't do it.
Oh, nice. And here we have, uh, Kristoff. Kristoff is saying maybe someone will be interested. Ambionics UK, Ben Ryan provides this project for free. Let's take a look. Wow, some nice looking designs here, especially that varial hand. That looks interesting. It's got a pivoting thumb. Looks pretty sturdy. Now that, I imagine that's for an arm because I don't see a place for a hand to actually fit in there. I could be wrong. It's not a great angle.
I downloaded it and played with it a little. I believe it only has three fingers.
Oh yeah, that's right. One, two, three fingers and a thumb, which, which is not a bad idea.
No, it isn't. Yeah.
Ends up, I don't think it compromises the functionality and it ends up looking, it has more of the, the, the sort of the sizing of a, of a real hand. That's pretty interesting.
I downloaded it, but I haven't printed it.
So do you know anything about what this one is here? It looks, that looks a lot like the gripper hand that, uh, John and, and Skip, uh, came up with. Is that just a?
It looked like the fingers were fused.
Exactly, and only the thumb moves.
Yeah, I, 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 I mean, I, I, I didn't print it because it was, um, I've got so much, I, I have no access to my computer right now, but um, it looks like an interesting thing to play with. It, it's certainly nice to have in your toolbox.
Uh, Skip has been in touch with, uh, with Ben.
Oh, okay.
Are indeed admirers of the Ambionic Hand.
Excellent. Well, thank you for sharing this, uh, Kristoff, and I'm going to, uh, let me grab that link. I'm going to add that into our collection down here of assistive tech device repositories, which I had a meeting with Ian about. I'll tell you about that later. And next up, we'll go to this one, Eric. Let's see, Eric Bubar. Oh, good to see you, Eric. I'm going to repost this Google form links. I've noticed lots of new people looking for Enable projects lately. The above is a link to a Google form with instructions on doing a quantitative test procedure. Oh, this is for the box and block test. Excellent. Yeah, that's a, that's a really great way. And Adam commented here. Adam, do you want to offer any, um, uh, comments verbally here on this?
Um, yes, I, 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 I'm afraid I was kind of a stick in the mud, uh, about this one. Um, so I, I am a hundred percent on board with the idea that we should be, uh, encouraging, um, some more data collection and trying to get some standards in play so that if we were going to go the route of, you know, publishing a white paper or, or doing poster presentations, we would have something to present. And so I, I think this is a really great idea. Um, I think that, uh, we need to be a little bit careful and maybe uh, do some due diligence to reach out to, uh, uh, some field experts in the, you know, realm of occupational therapy and prosthetics, uh, to, to select appropriate tests and also uh, make sure that they're being administered in the right way. Uh, the box and block test is like a simple tool in itself, but there's a very specific way in which needs to be administered and, uh, specific ways in which the data needs to be collected. Um, so slight variances in, um, you know, the tools, uh, can, can, you know, invalidate the results. And so I just, I, I, I just wanted to throw a word of caution out there. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is the box and block is, is not really, um, uh, indicated for, uh, a percuti amputation. It's not really, uh, validated, uh, as a, a proper functional assessment there, largely because there's so much variability between, um, amputation level and, uh, device used. So it's, um, it, it's kind of a hinky one. I, that, you know, caveat to that caveat though, um, there is not a uniform, uh, assessment measure um, for, uh, individuals with, uh, a percuti amputation.
Well, that's there. Sorry, go ahead.
No, no, no. All, all I was going to say is that a lot of people have a, a, a lot of strong feelings about this, um, in, in research land. Um, but, uh, I, I found after he posted this, I went out and I found a couple of pretty, uh, uh, well, uh, argued, uh, stances, a couple of papers, uh, where, uh, some, some industry experts, OTDs and, and the like, um, had done some meta-analyses of, uh, different, uh, testing batteries. And I think there's a lot out there that could be done, but I think that, um, before we, we have a big community call to do, you know, a thing, I think it might be a good idea to kind of put our heads together a bit and say, you know, what are we actually trying to test? And what is it that would be useful for us in terms of like setting some next steps?
Of course.
Yeah.
So I think you make some great points, Adam. I just want to point out that I, I think that would be a very relevant discussion to have probably between you and Eric. I see that he's talking about this being an IRB sanctioned study and publishing journals. And I think what you're saying is very relevant to that. Where I'm looking at this from, and I think a lot of our other volunteers would be is, uh, we're not coming at this from a research point of view. We're not trying to provide any definite, you know, this is the answer. What we're trying to do is, is compare one device design against another.
Sure.
So even if, you know, you say, well, you know, there's variance in the results or it wasn't administered by a professional, as long as it's administered in a consistent way, you know, it's valuable to us to just know this design performed much better than this design, you know, because right now the, the, the principle with Enable has always been with our devices. We know they're not the leading edge. We know they're not as good as what professionals produce. But our thing has always been, well, it's better than nothing and nothing is often what people have.
Yeah, so to, to that end, what I was thinking is that, um, a, a survey would be a really great starting point to get just a baseline qualitative impression of, uh, how a person feels their functionality, uh, was before, uh, the amputation before device, uh, received and then after administration of the device. I think that would be a good baseline. And then if we were to, I, I mean, there are simple things like this 3D loop puzzles and, uh, you know, some simple grip. Uh, I said, I, I don't know. I think the box and block i- is great. It's something.
I agree with what you're saying, Adam. It's, uh, part of this is just, you know, I think John and I have a little bit more history here and what you might not be aware of is we've tried many, many, many times to do the surveys that you're talking about. We just don't get responses. It's very, very difficult to get anyone to engage with us and share that feedback and data. I think Saif is probably one of the more successful ones in doing that kind of research by actually interviewing people. Um, but most of our attempts at doing any kind of surveys to our device users have just been an utter failure. So I agree completely with what you're saying, but again, we usually end up coming back to let's do what we can do because some data is better than no data. And right now we have absolutely no data on how our different designs compare.
Yeah, I, I'm totally on board. I, I will say that, um, our, our, uh, anonymous, uh, industry insider who will be meeting with soon, uh, Jeremy. Uh, I think we'll have some good insight about how we could potentially get some, some better engagement and what measures might be good. Um, but, uh, we, we can save that for an offline discussion.
Yeah, and any of that kind of input we can get from people in the medical community is absolutely valuable and welcome. So I, I hope you'll be able to help us there, you know, to, you know, have them instruct us, you know, if we want to do some kind of quantitative or qualitative testing, what's the better way to go about that and what is important? And I, I, we welcome that, that data. We just want to what we can when we can, you know?
I, I really don't want to come down on the side of discouraging people from doing this. And I, I just, I want to make sure that, um, you know, w- we're not collecting misleading information. That, that would be detrimental as well.
Agreed, agreed. Yeah. Uh, John, I saw you had your hand up. I'm sorry to, I jumped in there. Did you want to add to that?
I, I was just going to summarize that there are several goals. Um, one is to assess the dexterity of an amputee. Another is to assess a device itself. And the standard technique for assessing a device, I think, may escape many of the appropriate criticisms involved in clinical evaluation using this technique.
And he's, you know, he's describing one type of testing, the box and block test, which it to us has more to do with, you know, how, you know, how good is the, the basic function of the device? How well does this design grip compared, you know, how well do the fingers grasp a, a block compared to other designs? So there is some basic data just about the design itself in there, you know, does a design that has that sort of Whipple tree component to allow sort of variable finger movement, does that perform better than one that doesn't? You know, things like that we can get. And to John's point, there are other types of testing we can do that would have nothing to do with the end user. For example, strength testing, you know, how much weight can one of these hold before it breaks when it's made out of this material or this material when we use this much infill or that much infill? You know, there's, there's other kinds of testing that we could do that, that would give us some data. That's not to discount anything you're saying, but I, I think.
You know, if, if we were to have any kind of in-person event at some point in the future or some kind of coordinated virtual event where, you know, we, we've got some things happening simultaneously, I would be really excited to get like, you know, just throwing an idea out there, like ten device recipients who have like three different models or, you know, models with slight variances like you're describing and just run them through a testing battery.
Yeah, that can be a lot of fun. That, that's a really good idea. And we haven't, you know, we haven't done one of those in-person events on any kind of a significant scale in a long time. So that would be worth talking about. But, uh, that would be great to, to see come together. All right, anyone else have any, uh, thoughts on this? Okay, we'll move on. Last one here is from Nicole, offering resources. Nicole Chen, uh, with our Aragon Robotics team from San Mateo, California. Welcome. Have access to 3D printers, filaments, and are able to put prosthetics together. Love to help in any way they can. I see that she was greeted by Michael, uh, from Botswana. And, uh, Lori, fiance has a below the knee left leg amputa- amputation. Okay, that's a little challenging for us, but good that they're making a connection. See Sarah, uh, introduced, uh, welcomed her and, uh, invited her to the new member meetup. Thank you. And the link, great. So I think, uh, Nicole's in good hands. Hopefully we'll see her at today's new member meetup. So let's go on here. Um, let's see, in terms of our recurring events, I didn't update this. Obviously the next one is the education and new member meetup, which is today. Just after this meeting, twelve PM Eastern. So, uh, right when this one ends, that one will be beginning and everyone is welcome to join. It's for new members as well as uh, anyone in education, students, teachers, um, student groups, et cetera, but really anyone is welcome to join, especially, you know, people like you, Marty, who are just kind of looking to figure out where they can get involved and how they can help. That's what those meetings were all about. Bionic Design Group, uh, and other recurring meetings can be seen on the calendar. Let's just go straight to that calendar for April here. So let's see, we already did the chapter leader meeting. Anything to report from that one, John? I, I saw your email. You want to maybe, oh, did we lose John? I think he stepped away.
I am here. The chapter leaders meeting had a, a, a good and thorough update from Zainab about the situation in Turkey. And she's, uh, she specifically asked for some recommendations for two cases that they're now getting a lot of. Um, one is adults. Uh, and the other is above elbow for children and adults. Uh, Rick and I pointed her and I followed up with an email, which I think I copied to Rick just.
Yes.
Uh, the initial thought was that the Quawu was the best above elbow suggestion. Um, I think that the ambionics that we just looked at is, is worth thinking about, but I also make connections to, um, uh, Roberto, the Belgian prosthetist who has wonderful foam-based, um, devices for children and made a number of other, uh, connections along those lines in hopes that we can get some good, uh, support, some good connections. Um, she's also dealing with skepticism from some, uh, medical professionals. And so, uh, I volunteered Adam and me to write a letter of support and, uh, gave some other background.
Yeah, and, and I, I wanted to talk to you, um, uh, one-on-one about that, John, uh, about the, uh, to, to get a little bit more of the particulars in place. I, I wasn't sure exactly uh, what, what the ask was there.
Okay, so, um, I think John muted because his, his dog was.
And now I'm back. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm hearing all the time, but I'm trying not to, uh, happy to hear the dog barking. Um, right, so let's do talk maybe at the end of this meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. That, that'll be great.
My, my dog just wandered over to see what, what was going on. All right, so, uh, back to events. Uh, so the next one is today's, uh, Enable Education New Member Meetup, and it looks like Ian's going to be presenting about the collaboration with NIH. Uh, it used to be called the NIH 3D Print Exchange. They've rebranded it now as just NIH 3D has a new look and we'll be talking about our plans. I had a great meeting with Ian this week. Talked about where we want to go next in terms of making, you know, that our current catalog and bringing in all of our current designs and adding in all sorts of new categories for other types of assistive technology. So it's not ready for use yet, but the foundations have been laid with all kinds of, uh, you know, metadata and everything that we need to move forward now. So, um, it's, it's, it's looking really good. And I, I think we're on track to get to where we want to be with that. So Ian will be talking about that today. And we have the Bionic Design Group on the twenty-eighth and, uh, that will be, uh, led by Vbec. Looks like he's going to be talking about new developments in, but well, I guess that's just sort of the generic description. So I don't know if he has anything specific in mind for this, this month's meeting.
Um, he, he, he doesn't yet. That's to be determined.
So if anyone's interested in powered devices, the bionic type that have, you know, motors or linear actuators, sensors, things like that, that's the meeting to join. And of course, externally powered. Thank you, Adam. Yes. Um, and if anyone, a- a- as always, we have these, uh, town hall meetings every week and there's some other news that Sarah shared here as well, which I'll let you guys kind of go through at your leisure. We're going to get back to our agenda. So, any updates on your outreach activities, Adam?
Oof, um, I'm, I'm, um, yes. Uh, all righty, so, uh, next week is the twenty twenty-three AOTA, the American Occupational Therapy Association Conference. I've been in touch with a couple of folks who are going to be there, uh, as well as a couple of OT directors for various programs who gave me some pointers and, uh, uh, ideas about people to uh, find what, once I'm there. I'm pretty excited. I've got a, uh, at least one device, as Sarah mentioned at the top of this call, uh, on the way that I'll be able to showcase. Jeremy, thank you again for the shirts.
Yeah.
Um, from 3D Universe, the Enable branded stuff. I'm going to be wearing those with my spiffy little conference suit and, uh, making a show of it. I'm also got my, uh, Enable business cards, which I'm going to be handing out all over the place.
Yeah, I like the, I like the kind of cards you did. Those are sharp looking.
Oh yeah, they're great. They're vertical, uh, alignment and, uh, they've got this kind of like gold metallic foil sheen to them. They're, they're really spiffy.
So we should just mention that, that if anyone else in the community ever finds themselves in a similar situation where you want to go and represent Enable at events or things like that, let's get that design from Adam, put your contacts on there and we'll use that same design and, and, you know, then, and get those for whoever needs them.
Yeah, I, I will say one shortcoming, this is the first time I've had a vertically aligned card. One shortcoming I've noticed is that, uh, I think even though the, the alignment was centered on the, uh, maker, uh, unlike the, the design tool, um, when they cut it, there's like some variability. So it looks, it's very, you have to really look, uh, but it's slightly off-center, which, you know, for someone with my ADHD and.
Consistently off-center where we could just compensate for that in the graphic or is it variable?
I mean, I, I, I feel like it, it is consistently off-center, like, you know, a millimeter to the left. But I worry that, you know, we, we adjust for it and then, you know, it's, it's off.
It's different next time, yeah.
And then boom.
Okay.
Even worse. Uh, but yeah, it's, it's really not a huge problem. I just wanted to mention it in, uh, in case it's widely used and people say, why did Adam design this terrible thing?
Yeah.
Um, beyond, beyond that, um, uh, so I have reached out to, gosh, I, I was actually just on Wednesday. I spoke at uh, the, so, um, regarding the assistive technology program, I realized that, you know, quote unquote outreach has, has kind of, uh, sprawl to cover a lot of different initiatives. So.
Uh, it tends to happen in this community.
Yeah, feel free to rein me in, um, if it's not what, what you're looking for, but uh, on Wednesday I met with, uh, the leaders of, I think it was, it was about a dozen different state assistive technology act, uh, programs. Um, and specifically it was their, uh, small group, which is, uh, interested in exploring 3D printing topics. Um, it was a really exciting discussion.
So which ones did you meet? Which states?
So let's see, this was, okay, this was New York, Texas, Missouri, and a few others that are. Um, but yeah, it, it was, it was really great. Um, we, they are very excited about the potential for collaboration with Enable. I let them know about my plans for assigning, uh, state champions, uh, in the Enable community to reach out to, um, uh, each of their leaders and the Texas leader, uh, said that Mike Corson, uh, down in Dallas actually reached out to her just recently. So that's, looks like this is already starting to plug away. Um, so, uh, I just want to get a couple of, uh, uh, you know, some tracking documentation in place on the hub. I've got a space, uh, dedicated for this, uh, already, which is the assistive technology space. Um, and, uh, there is an Excel document there, uh, for putting down, uh, your information as well as the, the state's contact information um, and their website and so on and so forth. But, uh, th- there are a lot of, I think there is so much potential work there in, in, in expanding into assistive tech. Um, we also brought up makers making change and Chad Lehman and, and the work that, yeah, I, I know I've, I talked about them a couple of weeks ago, um, but just to, to restate a couple of points.
I actually have a request for you. If you don't mind me jumping in, Adam.
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm trying to gather down here just as they come up all these different repositories of open source assistive tech.
Okay.
Because as I mentioned, Ian and I, and hopefully an intern, are going to be working on bringing all that into the new NIH platform. And we definitely, you know, we'll start with our prosthetic designs, but then we want to expand into these other assistive texts. So when you're talking to each of these states, if you could ask them, do they have a website where they share their catalog of designs and may we, you know, include those in our catalog?
Yeah.
Those links with me and I'll just start collecting them here.
Well, I'll tell you, uh, I, I'm really trying to, to, um, to start delegating a little bit more so that we can maybe get a little bit more traction. Uh, so I'm hoping that, uh, we can put out a call uh, so that more chapters in specific states, uh, can reach out to their respective AT Act Program, which, and I, you, you might notice I'm saying AT Act Program, not AT Program. I was corrected in the. I was corrected in the call. It's the Assistant Technology Act Program. It's an ATAP, not ATP. ATP is the professional who works within that, that venue. So yeah, I'm hoping that we can have a standard and that would be someone that would be captured by that state's champion.
I think it's a great idea. I would just, just encourage you to come up with some kind of a tracking mechanism, a simple spreadsheet or something so that we don't.
I've got one.
Okay. Because we don't want a bunch of different chapters reaching out to the same people, you know?
Yep. Yeah. So there's a tracking document in the space that anyone can, can view and then request editing permission.
So great.
Yeah. So that, that's, that was really great. I will say that one thing that we have, I don't think ever talked about, that would be a really interesting expansion of our scope. The Director of the Texas State Program is a speech pathologist like my wife, and she had tons of questions about 3D printed tools for communication devices. And that is.
What's, what's an example or two of that?
Yeah. So AAC is adaptive communication. I forget the, the other A. But it is a whole branch of rehabilitation therapeutic study. So frequently, I'd say most typically, a speech language pathologist leads the charge there, but OTs also facilitate a lot of that work. It is vitally important in, you know, a vast array of diagnoses and developmental delays and all, all kinds of things that people who are just not able to communicate for one reason or another through traditional means can utilize. So these are things like text to speech devices, kind of at your base level. But they're also tools that can be wheelchair mounted. You know, this is like getting down to the level of like, you know, tracking eye movement to string together sentences using like a camera and, and computer interface. So it gets really high tech and it can also be pretty low tech.
I was going to ask, because I think I've seen things as simple as just like a board that would have a bunch of different symbols to represent, and you could just kind of point to, you know, what you're trying to communicate, that kind of thing.
Exactly. So it can be really great for like pre-reading level kiddos who can, you know, for example, the example that the Texas director was sharing with me, and I'm going to try to blast through this quickly. I know that we're, we're running out of time. But she's got a kiddo who is visually impaired, whose hands are quite small. And so he has difficulty grasping the standard. So there are these, these communication boards where you kind of plug and play these different shaped objects. And then that, you know, communicates your, your need or, you know, answers a question or, you know, communicates. But the, the symbols are too large for his hands. And so she was wondering if those could be scaled down and 3D printed to, you know, 50% size. And I said, yeah, that sounds super easy.
That sounds like a perfect application for 3D.
And my thought is that I happen to have an in into the speech pathology world. This might be a whole new sphere of experts who are in no way plugged into the world of 3D printing, who may be very interested in something like this. And.
Idea. I mean, I can, doing those little components, you could scale them to whatever size needed. You can embed little magnets maybe to.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a, that's a neat idea.
Yep, yep, yep. So I, I asked my wife about it. She thought it was pretty cool. I am going to see if I can rope her into communicating with her barring that. I'm going to see if I can, I've actually got a good buddy who is in SLP as well. And I know that he's been looking for something to do on the side. So this might be a, a good, good chance for, for that. So yeah, stay tuned. I'll, I'll let you know if anything else comes of it. But I think this is, this is a technology program thing is, I, I think it's going to be pretty exciting stuff.
Excellent.
Only one other thing. I reached out to an individual named Florian Valles. He is a nonprofit director based in Brussels who founded Ugani Prosthetics. They supply prosthetics devices to individuals in emerging countries. And I, it's sort of a combination between funding, recycling, and then, you know, fill in the blank to get prosthetic devices that people need all over the world, primarily in the developing world. Very much in line with my sort of grand ambitions for what Enable can be in the years ahead. So I reached out to him. He's excited to talk with us. I'm going to be setting up a call with him soon. I had a call scheduled this week with the ICRC Director for East Africa for their rehabilitation program. We had a missed connection. It was my fault. I had the time change, the, the time zone change wrong. But lesson learned, we're going to be reconnecting next week. She's also going to be getting me in touch with the global ICRC Chairs for physical rehabilitation and also prosthetics programs. So I'm, this is starting to snowball. I'm really excited and.
That tends to happen. Our concern is always just, you know, we get every now and then, we're lucky enough to find someone like you. And unfortunately, more often than not, these things do tend to snowball. And unfortunately, people tend to get burned out. Please don't let that happen.
You, you bet. And when I said snowball, what I meant is like, you know, one connection is turning into like another connection, not that I'm feeling overwhelmed. I'm, I'm not that excited right now.
Well, you gotta please do let us know if that changes and you're feeling overwhelmed. That's where we need to, we need to help because we, we just, we really don't want to lose someone like you.
You bet.
All right. Okay, so we wanted to talk about conditions for paying for work within the Enable community. And this goes back to the Enable Fund. And what kinds of, what kinds of funding proposals do we want to support through the Enable Fund? You know, the general guiding principle in the past has been, we try to focus on supporting those initiatives that will provide some kind of benefit to the overall community as opposed to something that might benefit one volunteer or one chapter or one set of, you know, you know, end users or what have you. You know, we, we're, we tend to be more interested in supporting things that like, hey, I, you know, I see that this, you know, we don't currently have a solution for this. I want to build a solution and then I'll make that available to the community, whether that be some new, you know, web application to do something that we need, or maybe a new design that somebody wants to create that there's a need for. You know, those are the king things that we've, we've generally supported in the past. We generally have not supported things like, hey, I just started a new chapter and we'd like some money to buy, you know, some 3D printers or to buy materials. Usually we haven't supported that kind of thing because again, that's, that's really more about that particular chapter. And we encourage them to find other ways of, you know, crowdfunding or things like that to, to get started. The gray area tends to come up in terms of, you know, paying people for doing work. Obviously, we're a volunteer community. And most of the people like myself and John and Adam, you know, we do what we do just because it, you know, it's, it's what we want to be doing. It has its own rewards. There are some, the, the thinking in the past has been, there are some things that we do or need done that require a certain level of time commitment. Like, you know, things like managing our social media and putting out our newsletters and think, you know, could we maybe find a volunteer to do those things? Maybe? Would they stay on long term and make it into a consistent thing that's done on, on a really regular ongoing basis? Probably not. Those volunteers tend to come and go. And so in the past, we have had some cases where we use the Enable Fund to pay for those roles that seem like maybe this isn't something that we should expect a volunteer to do. Don't want to put you on the spot, but Sarah is an example of that, not by, you know, her encouragement. That was our choice. We said that we think this is one of those roles. Our communications coordinator role that Ben Rubin used to do, and he was also paid. We see that as a role that, you know, probably isn't going to be done effectively by a volunteer, or at least that's been our experience so far. That even if we find a volunteer who can do a good job with it, usually doesn't last all that long. And then we have to start over and train somebody else. And there's a cost to that too, right? It's, it costs people their time and energy. So that's a little bit of background. I'd like to open this up for discussion. What do you guys think about what sorts of things we should or shouldn't be using the Enable Fund for? Anyone's welcome to chime in here.
I pasted my little mantra into the chat. I think we need to pay for things that volunteers can't do, won't do, or shouldn't do. Make a long-term commitment and be held accountable is something volunteers very rarely can do because often they have jobs or other commitments which necessarily prioritize that. There are things they won't do. We've had a terrible time, for example, getting good reliable data about what's going on. Our volunteers could do it, but they're not into it, frankly. And we're grateful for what they, they will do. But that's an example where if we had someone who was willing and able to systematically help us unearth and quantify our impact after years of trying to get volunteers to just submit it, I would be quite happy to to support the funding of something like that, if I thought it would actually. And then there are things volunteers shouldn't do. There's confidential patient information and so on. That probably needs to be dealt with by a professional like Adam perhaps, or by a paid volunteer. Who has that kind of relationship. It's a guideline. It doesn't actually say what the actual cases are, but it does suggest a series of criteria. I will also add, however, that these norms, and I haven't introduced anything new here, have themselves emerged from the, our practice in voting up and down specific proposals over the years. That means it can change. It's not, it's not set in stone, but we seem to be the, the way the community has, has evolved and we just sort of tried to codify it. Now we think maybe we need to make it more explicit.
Other thoughts? Go ahead, Rick.
I have recently spoken with Ian Davis. I guess you guys all know him, the guy with the, the amazing, amazing hand. And he's right now looking for the possibility of funding on his new 3D printed model. And I, I just told him, maybe he should contact Enable to find out what it is he's looking for, what it is he's interested in doing. I don't know if it's something you guys would be interested in or not. I made no commitments. I just said it would probably be worth a discussion.
I, I know I would definitely support that. I was so impressed with the work he's done and I would love to see a 3D printable version of that.
He, he right now is taking the 3D printed versions. And he found a company that makes the 3D parts into metal. So what's really nice about that design is you could do it either way. If you needed something really robust.
And those parts don't need to be scaled differently for different people? Are they consistent?
No. If, if somebody really required a metal, if they had a metal requirement, they'd have to actually send that in to the company and have it.
Oh, okay. No, I don't know if you're talking about the same thing. We actually do something like this. And I don't, I don't know how many people in our community know about this, but a lot of, pretty much any printer these days, I'm going to pull this up real quick, can actually print in metal using the right materials. So there's materials from Bass F, the Ultrafuse, they have a 316L steel and they also have a 174 steel. And you can print these, they're, they're, it's mixed with a plastic. So you can print them on a standard 3D printer. And then you have to, they have to be scaled. There's some nonlinear scaling, which actually the, the latest version of Kura handles for you now automatically. Because what happens then is you print your part and then you stick it in a box and you send it off with one of these processing tickets that you get for, for 50 bucks. That's good for up to a kilogram of parts. You send it off to this company, DSH, and they put it through a debinding and sintering process. So debinding to kind of remove the, the non-metal material and then they put it into basically a sintering oven. And what comes out is an actual solid steel part, which has then shrunk down to your target dimensions. And that might be what he's talking about. Even if it's not, that would be another way of approaching that. So I don't know how many people are aware that you can do that with standard 3D printers without anything special.
So that's relevant to our discussion, Rick, because if what if we were to stick to our current norms, if we were to develop a metal based hand that only he could produce and not in quantity, then it's less likely to be something the community would want to fund. If he could do it and document a way in which it would open this up to lots of people in the community, then I think it's, it's, it's more likely to get voted up.
I believe that the, the new one he's working on is either or. You can print it in, in plastic and it works, but if a person needed something that was more robust. It, it, you know, he basically sent the parts printed in 3D out to somebody. I don't remember who it was he sent it to. And then they returned metal parts, but he also has them in plastic.
I'll bet he's doing that. I'll bet he's doing the same thing that I just showed. And an interesting possibility to think about is, you know, most of our volunteers probably won't want to mess with this, but we don't need them to. We need a handful of volunteers that are willing to get this material. And we would, I would suggest that the Enable Fund could help to cover the cost of the material and the cost of those processing tickets. And that, that those volunteers would essentially become a service provider. When somebody needs metal parts, they would print them in the metal, send it off for processing and then send the final metal parts to the people that need them. I, I think that could be a wonderful service that some of our volunteers could provide and that could be supported through the Enable Fund. Something to think about. Other thoughts from anyone here about what we should be funding through the Enable Fund? Or Rick, I'm sorry, were you, did you have anything else to add? I think that's.
No, that's okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
I think that I think that there's the potential to really expand what we are capable of accomplishing to, to, to increase our footprint and increase our impact within that footprint by bringing on someone or multiple someones in paid positions. I think that engagement is one of the issues that we struggle with the most. And I agree that I think that, that comes from the fact that we are decentralized and this is purely volunteer. And so it's not top of mind for most people. I think there's a ton of goodwill, but I think there's a ton of skill. But engagement is kind of where, where the disconnect happens. So, you know, getting someone on a paycheck, I think is the easiest and most direct way to do that. Now, I, I guess in my mind, there are kind of three steps. I think step one is identifying what the best roles would be and, and, you know, getting some, some kind of mission outcomes that we're looking for, that, that these individuals would, would fill. And then getting the money in place to better justify it, I think we could explore. And this is coming from some big grain of salt who has zero fundraising experience. But if we had, if we retain the services of, you know, a consulting firm, someone who is experienced in fundraising, and we made a mission of, of hitting a, a target, we had a, you know, a focus campaign. And we were out there hitting the pavement, trying to, to make this happen. I think that that is the kind of thing that could feed itself. And, you know, bringing people on would increase visibility and increase visibility would increase funding, that could bring more people on. I, I think that all sounds great, but it's something I know nothing about. And so I'm, I'm a little hesitant endorsing one way or the other.
And you, you talked about a three-step process. What, what's the third step or did I?
Oh. Um, again, ADHD. So we've got, we, oh gosh, step one, identifying mission goals.
Get the money and do it.
There it is. Yep. So step one is identify goals. Step two would, would be, you know, getting the tools together to, to make that happen. And then step three would be, you know, acting upon it.
Execution, got it.
Then, you know, rinse, repeat. So.
I, yeah, and I, I think that makes a lot of sense.
So in that regard, I would vote.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry, John. I was just saying that I would vote I to definitely open the door to, you know, retain the services of, of people. I, my thumb on the scale would be, I think we should look at people who are, you know, a firm or individual who is highly experienced in leading fundraising campaigns. And that would, I think, beget in the other role that we were looking to fill.
So you're actually suggesting that we start with a fundraiser. Now,
Yep.
you know, I, I think my position is we've had money in the bank for several years that we this 10K a year, 30K a year, sorry, I embarrassingly, I'm slipping, but we've had, we've been getting 30K a year from, from a foundation and. um, from a foundation and we haven't exhausted that. Now it's true that that's not enough to hire somebody, but I actually do think, and I'm, I'm doing a little fundraising or planning to do some fundraising elsewhere. There are foundations that are waiting for requests like this, if they're well-articulated requests. Um, and I do have access to a good database of potential funders. I don't have the inclination or the time to do the grant writing or defining the position, but, um.
I know somebody who's good at grant writing on this call.
Yes. Is that you?
No, that's Sarah.
Sarah. Yes.
I can, I can help.
Okay. Um, so I, I would suggest that we start with number one and then we consider the right way to go about number two. Right? We start by identifying, and again, I like to do this incrementally. What's the one position we would like to be able to hire? Um, is it full-time or part-time? Either way, I think, uh, a, a half-time or full-time position without strip what we currently have funding for. That's a good reason to then say, let's look at the grants database and see if there's some, um, easy hits. And then we can write some letters of inquiry. And then if we get some nibbles, uh, I now hear that we can have Sarah help us produce a proposal.
So I, I agree with that, John, with the exception that I don't think we should limit ourselves to identifying the one role that we need. I think that just as, as Adam said, we should identify what are the roles that would be needed. Some of them might be full-time, some of them might be half-time, but let's figure out what all of those potential roles are. And then we can start to look at, okay, what do we start with? Do we, do we start with this, just this one? Do we start with these two, these three? Um, let's not limit ourselves in the initial thinking. Let's just figure out what those roles would be and what they entail. Um, and this is one of those things that I, um, I want to finish this discussion, but I also don't want this to just be one of those great ideas that doesn't go anywhere. So before we end here, we should talk about who wants to be involved in this working group. So, and, and let's think about, actually, let's, let's get a meeting. Let's, let's set up a Zoom session. Let's do a brainstorming. Let's, let's start documenting what these potential roles would be. Let's, let's actually figure out how to proceed on this, but, um, we'll do that after we finish our discussion. So anybody else have thoughts on, um, either on that topic or other, uh, thoughts about how we use the Enable Fund to the best, to the greatest benefit of the community? Okay. Well then maybe we should start there. Let's, let me just take a, by a show of hands or, uh, uh, you know, show virtual hands who'd like to be a part of that, that working group to figure out first what those roles might be and what they would entail. I'm happy to be part of that.
Um, I'm willing to be part of that.
Excellent. I see me, John, and Rick and Adam. Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to be part of that? Um, please let me know. You can message me or text or anything like that. So let's see, um, initial working group to identify potential paid roles. Jeremy, John, Rick, Adam, anyone else right now? No pressure at all. Just want to make sure I'm including anyone that has interest. So I'll send out a, um, a, a Calendly link to see if we can, actually, I'll probably do this one as a poll, um, a scheduling poll. Anytime we get more than three people, it gets pretty hard to find a, an available time. So I'll send out a scheduling poll, you know, time to meet poll and.
Jeremy, we might save, uh, a, a few hours collectively if we could stay.
We're trying to do it right now.
A few minutes and do it in real time.
All right. Um, who's, who's got the most restrictive schedule? I think maybe Adam, do you want to suggest a time that we can all look at?
I'm pretty open on Tuesday of next week and that's about it.
Okay, Tuesday of next week, um, would, uh, let's see, 12:30 Central. Actually this is flexible. So anytime from 11:30 Central until 2:00 PM Central, would that work for others on the list?
All of that is open for me. So pick one.
Rick, is that good for you?
Well, it's.
Yeah.
2:00 PM.
Okay, so 1:00 PM Central.
Well, uh.
2:00 PM Eastern?
Oh, well, that's this week. Hang on. Next week. Yes, I can do 1:00 PM Central.
And that's on the 18th. Does that work for everyone?
Yep.
Okay. I will, uh, send out the Zoom invite later. Let me just put a placeholder in here. Let's see. Okay, I'll go stick in a Zoom link and send that out after this meeting. Thank you guys. That's a great idea. Adam, I, I think that could really be impactful and expand our, our reach, like you said. Um, so.
Before we end the call, I dropped this in the chat. I just wanted to mention, and if, if we don't want to vote on this right now. Um, I've been in communication with Taino, uh, Tainara down in Brazil, um, for, uh, you know, the better part of six months or so. Um, she, I, I've mentioned her several times. She has frequent, uh, clinic comp, uh, complex. She's practicing OT, uh, and she's also very skilled 3D printer and designer.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't see that, Adam. Is, is it, is it urgent or can we talk about that next week? Cause I'm supposed to be starting our next meeting right now.
Not at all urgent. I just wanted to float the idea that I think that she would be a really good person to, you know, uh, hop the title onto, uh, and give her a little bit of, uh, clout to, uh, start coordinating some, some of the stuff.
I will definitely.
That we have her as a guest at one of our existing meetings. That'll give her a feel for our process and give us a feel for her.
Yep. She spoke at, uh, a couple of the healthcare roundtables that I organized last, uh, late last year. She would, uh, she signaled that she'd be very interested in leading those.
Let's, let's try to get her into one of.